Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Hey, audio is good. Do you remember using microphones? Call the meeting in order. Have roll call, please.
Joe Meyer.
Here.
Keesling.
Here.
Link Hammer.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Okay, we'll start with citizens' input. Anyone to address the council?
My name is Clyde K. I live at sixty-eight-one Valleywood Court. I would like the UTV ordinance brought back up, back on the agenda. Uh, there's two emails sent to council members with only one being a response to it. So I would like that brought back up by the council. Thanks.
All right, nobody on Zoom right now. I don't see anybody.
Just, just there and hearing.
Okay, we'll start with the consent agenda. Do we have anything for separate discussion? Otherwise, a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second. Call roll, please.
Reich.
Hi.
Joe Meyer.
Hi.
Keesling.
Hi.
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 Link Hammer.
Hi.
Okay, motion, consent agenda is approved five-zero. First item will be the library and report. Amanda?
Hello, uh, I'm Amanda San Vasquez. I'm the library director here at the Dubuque County Library District. My, our office is here in the Asbury branch. Um, I distributed by email the annual report of the Dubuque County Library District for fiscal year twenty-three. Um, across the board, very positive. Um, we saw a lot of growth in most of our statistics for this year. Um, there were some really big increases that I was really excited about, things like a eleven percent increase in our checkouts to eighty-six thousand seven hundred and forty-three items. Um, I will note, we're not quite back up to pre-pandemic levels yet, um, but this is a really great, uh, start in that direction. Uh, we have some non-traditional items that are performing really, really well, including our hotspots, um, puzzles and games. Saw a sixty percent increase in circulations this year. Um, and as we're preparing for our twenty-twenty-five budget, I will be asking the board to increase the number of hotspots that we have available for checkout because, one of the things we've noticed is based on how many times it is physically possible for those to circulate, that's how much they have circulated. There's not capacity for those to really go up anymore. If they are available, they are checked out. Um, we currently have ten for the entire district, so I think we have four or five of them here at Asbury and, you know, one or two at the rest of our branches, and I'd like to increase those. Um, checkouts of adult materials rose thirteen percent and children's materials rose twelve percent, so all really positive. Um, our ebook circulation was also up, uh, twenty percent this year. So we had nineteen thousand, just over nineteen thousand ebook checkouts and sixteen thousand audiobook checkouts through our statewide consortium. Um, in fiscal year nineteen, which is kind of our last normal-ish year, uh, those numbers were twelve and seven thousand. So really significant increases to both of those in the last four years. Uh, we've also been doing a lot of really great programming. Uh, our summer reading theme this year was, um, well, for last year was Read Beyond the Beaten Path. This year was Find Your Voice. We're doing a lot of partnerships with other community organizations and trying to do more of our programs kind of outside of the walls of the library, and that's, uh, going really well, I would say. Our program statistics were up hugely, like a hundred and seventeen percent, uh, over the previous year. Um, so yeah, that's obviously great. We're really excited about that. Um, about Asbury specifically, Asbury continues to be our busiest branch. Um, I pulled some specifics there. Seventy-one percent of our checkouts happen at the Asbury branch. So our other four branches are in, uh, Piasta, Upworth, Farley, and Holy Cross. Um, so seventy-one percent of our checkouts here, uh, sixty-six percent of our holds that were placed were also filled and picked up here in Asbury. Um, eighty-six percent of our new patrons, uh, indicated that the Asbury branch is their home branch, which actually outpaces our current number of patrons who list Asbury as their home branch, which is about eighty-one percent. So eighty-one percent of our patrons, um, view at the Asbury branch as their home branch. So we continue to be really, really busy, which is really, really good because we slowed down a lot in the last few years. So, um, we're finding that our door counts are rising a little faster than our circulations were, so just indicating people are coming in, uh, but maybe not checking out as many multiples of items at a time, but we're just glad to be getting them through the door this year.
Any questions for Amanda?
Amanda, what's your projected, um, increase as we're going into the fiscal year, um, twenty-five fiscal year on the per capita that you're going to, uh, share with us probably later this year?
Yeah, so we will need to get back, we need to report that to you by January ten, I believe, is what, uh, code dictates. Our finance committee is meeting for the first time next week, uh, so I don't have that for you yet. I can't imagine that it'll be less than a dollar of increase, which I believe our per capita this year is twenty, no, thirty-four, thirty-four fifty, maybe. Um, we have, you know, several priorities from the, the board or that the board set in our strategic plan a few years ago, one of which is to continue to form money on materials. Right now, we spend about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year on all of our materials, um, and that could stand to increase a bit. Our programming is really popular. That kind of tends to get, it gets bumped up a little bit and then kind of all the change gets swept into the, the programming, uh, budget line. So I don't, I don't have a dollar amount for you yet, um, but that will be coming up soon.
That was kind of my question. Where do you feel the district is financially?
I would say we're in good shape right now. Um, we have had a couple of, we had a couple of staff vacancies, um, and just hiring that's happened. So we've had, um, over the last couple of years and this year included, we'll have a staff vacancy for a little while. And so that's allowed us to, um, add to our reserves over the last few years. Um, and that's something where we and the board and I are very aware of, is that we are sitting on some reserves. We have, that, we had been building for a long time in anticipation of the Farley Library project and what we might, uh, be expected to contribute to that. Um, and I'll be at the supervisors' meeting on Monday again discussing that project, um, to see if and when and how that will move forward. Um, so we are kind of keeping that a little higher than we would in years when we weren't prioritizing a big project, but we also are self-funding a small portion of our budget, um, this FY twenty-four, because we knew that we were, are sitting on some reserves and we wanted to use that responsibly.
Thank you. Anything else for me? Karen, anything?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to your January tenth presentation.
I see.
Um, I will say this, I mean, I here every day and I see the programming and it is really awesome to see year-round, but certainly in some of the participation. And the kids that come walking out here today is just reassures me we made the right decision many years ago to put this here.
I would agree.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm trying to think how, just how many programs. I don't know that I even put the number of programs that we did in this, but, um, yeah, we do hundreds of programs a year. And they bring a lot of kids in the door and adults.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, the first, Beth, are we ready for the loan agreement you were gonna?
I've touched base with Ted and he's still struggling with some of the language in it, so probably TBD for next time.
Motion to table.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
All right. Next item is Resolution one forty-three, Resolution approving change order number two for the Hills Mill Road reconstruction project.
Yeah, um, so this change order, it's, uh, many items, um, as we got closer to the end of the project here, a lot of items were actually balanced out up. Um, there will be another change order, um, at a following meeting that will be a balance of items down. So I, just this large number is going to come down some when it's all said and done. So the total amount of this change order number two is sixty-six thousand, sixty-two dollars and thirty cents. Um, a large portion of that, nearly twenty thousand of it, was for the addition of some pavement at Autumn Drive that we were going to be doing next year as part of the project. We ended up doing it this year, uh, to help with crosswalk on Hills Mill Road, and it'll just give us a different match point on Autumn next year. Um, so that was just to kind of help with matching the two projects together. Um, and then there was also some concrete added in on the south end of the project up here by Wagner's, uh, as well. And then there's about seventy-five hundred dollars, um, that was spent, uh, at Lord of Life to replace, or not replace a catch basin, but to fix some stormwater issues at a catch basin and then replace some pavement and curb, and that was done as part of the, uh, agreement for the easement that was provided for storms who were upgrades, um, on their property as part of this project. Um, and then all the remaining items, um, are just added up. A lot of it is sidewalk and, uh, some additional driveway work throughout the project, um, that brings that number, um, to where it is. Unless council has questions, MSA would recommend approval of change order number two.
You, questions, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number one forty-three of twenty-twenty-three. Pay up for the amount of sixty-six thousand, sixty-two dollars and thirty cents.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. All roll.
Reich.
Hi.
Joe Meyer.
Hi.
Keesling.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Link Hammer.
Hi.
Approved five-zero, then you have Resolution one forty-four of twenty-twenty-three, Resolution approving pay up number seven for the Hills Mill Road reconstruction project.
Yes, uh, pay request number seven comes into the amount of one hundred thirty-six thousand, two hundred fifty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents. And the bulk of that, uh, was just for driveway work, sidewalk work, uh, and then some seating and structure. Um, unless council has questions, MSA would recommend approval of pay request number seven.
You.
Make a motion to accept Resolution number one forty-four of twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. All roll.
Reich.
Hi.
Joe Meyer.
Hi.
Keesling.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Reich, I mean, Link Hammer, sorry.
Hi.
Okay, that's approved five-zero. Move on to quarterly financial update.
Are already to September twenty-twenty-three, uh, first quarter of fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. We just had the, uh, annual update, you know, probably about a month ago. Um, for the most part, you know, we are tracking in our usual, uh, way. I, there's not a whole lot of, um, concern that I see in our, you know, current, uh, financial aspects. Um, for public safety, um, they're at twenty-two percent. I mean, everything should be around twenty-five percent. Um, the fire and ambulance shows zero because we get, um, billed for the fire and ambulance in the months of December and May typically. Um, our building is a little bit higher, um, as we're really kind of in the construction season, as well as our software, um, that we use for the, um, building and nuisance abatement, um, comes due in July. So that's a one-time cost that we won't see again. Um, in the public works area, that includes some of our wages, street, street lighting and snow and ice control. Uh, we're at about seventeen percent. Um, this tends to trend higher during the winter months when the guys are out, uh, doing snow removal. Um, wages are about twenty-four percent. Um, street-related expenditures about twenty-five percent. Um, street lighting is a little bit low, but, um, typically we get these, um, a light bill, um, at the end of the month, and that is being paid, um, in this, in the bills for this month. So there, we're behind like one month on this, uh, light bill for the street lighting. And snow and ice control, one of the big factors there is we get billed a lump sum from the city of Dubuque for salt, and we have not received that, um, invoice at this time. Um, under culture and recreation, um, one of the larger expenses is the library. We're at about forty percent there and we're at forty-eight point two-two percent. Um, again, this is an area where we make semi-annual payments, um, to the library. Those are due July and January. So we've pretty much paid fifty percent of that, and then we're about thirty-five percent, um, through the, um, parks budget, which a large part of that has been, um, our contract mowing that we're doing with, um, RAD this year. Um, general government, we're running about twenty-six percent. Um, the building repairs on the, this building are running a little bit higher than normal. And then we've also, you know, pay our insurance premiums pretty much a hundred percent in the month of July. So that's why that item is eighty-seven percent and it'll stay that way for the entirety of the year. Um, for the meadows, um, it's pretty typical. For the summer, we tend to run higher, um, at thirty-four point seven-five percent. Um, the pro shops running at thirty-seven percent of their total expenditures, farm growth thirty, um, eight percent, and grounds at thirty-one percent. Um, big change probably in the meadows operations as we no longer have the banquet, uh, operations that we're accounting for, um, for upstairs. For road use tax, we're at about twenty-nine percent. Again, the big item there where we're a little bit over budget was insurance. Um, street maintenance, um, typically Blaine does a lot of that work in, uh, May and June. Um, debt service, we're at zero percent. Debt, um, interest payments usually do, are come due in December. Interest and principal becomes due in June. Our capital projects, our Hills Mill project, um, as far as for budget, we're about fifty-seven percent of that budget, but not knowing, this is the whole budget for the, um, for the street project. We're not going to spend all that in this fiscal year because we spent some of that last fiscal year. It's always hard to time exactly on these projects when they start in April, how much is going to be spent in the prior fiscal year and carry forward. Um, as you can see from tonight's pay requests, we're substantially complete with the project and they're just doing some button-up things. Um, moving into Autumn Drive is we have ninety-five thousand dollars we've spent there doing design and bidding. Um, that project is, you know, ramping up as we did the walkthrough tonight, and we will be receiving bids on the project um, next week. Um, council will consider the bids the following week and we'll start doing stormwater, um, part of that project. Customer sanitary sewer on that project probably over the winter. And then start the road pro, project in April or May, like we usually do when the weather, uh, allows. Um, ARPA funding, um, we've allowed six hundred and forty-two thousand. We use that for fiber. The remainder of our ARPA funds will be transferred into the Hills Mill Road project, um, to fund, um, sewer, um, improvements. Um, vehicles and equipment, um, we haven't, um, we've only bought a mower and a truck bed this year. Um, I hopefully will receive a dump or a couple of snow piles and I'll pick up trucker too, so, no? Not next year. That's what we have budget for. Um, in the meadows, um, we have three hundred thousand dollars there, and we pretty much are working on closing out the, uh, meadows project. And then Forest Hill Stormwater will be getting, going into the bidding for, for that project. For water funds, um, we're at about seventeen percent of the expenditures there. Um, we have debt payment that comes through at the end of the year that'll bump that up. Um, we're keeping on track for utilities. And of course, insurance, we've already paid the bulk of. Um, our water meter project, um, that project is just starting, so if you've heard of anybody that's gotten a card, it is legit. It's from Ferguson and the city, and we'll be replacing another portion of our water meters that are getting old so that we, or the water usage is properly measured. Um, sewer, we've gone through thirty percent of our sewer budget. Uh, big line item there is the repairs and maintenance for about sixty percent of that line item. In solid waste, we're running on track there. The biggest, uh, expense in the solid waste budget is our Dittmer contract, and we're right on track with that. And in stormwater, we're about fifty percent of the expenditures, but, uh, a lot part of that is the contract that we have with the soil, um, conservation that we pay annually, and we paid that in July. Depends on the expenditures.
I have one. Uh, you made mention, and maybe I misunderstood, so I apologize maybe ahead of time. For the water meter project, you said that we were just getting started on that, but we're already at sixty-one percent. Did, did I miss something?
Um, that's because a big part of that is purchasing the water meters, and that's where that line item is.
Thank you.
That's it.
Any questions or comments?
Revenues in the general fund, um, fifteen percent mostly is due because, um, October is the month that we receive a majority of our property tax fund. Um, I think the good line item here is the meadows. Um, we're at forty-four percent in our revenue column, um, versus their expenses. So we're looking at a, a plus side there, um, the revenue over expenses in the meadows. Um, road use tax, we're at twenty-nine percent, so that's running a little bit ahead of what we anticipated. Um, debt service is the same as property taxes because we, um, get property taxes for that. The water, we received twenty-six percent of our revenue in water, revenue over expense in water is a hundred and nine thousand. In sewer, we've got twenty-eight percent of our revenues in. That has a slight, um, deficit in it. Um, solid waste, we've got twenty-five percent of our revenue in there and the deficit of fifteen thousand, but, um, that's a conscious decision to use some of the reserves, um, to fund the deficit. And then, um, stormwater, revenues are fifty-six thousand, which is about twenty-five percent. So revenues are expenses and the stormwater fund is like five thousand dollars.
All righty, questions, comments?
I've got a question there too. Uh, for the meadows revenue, we're at forty-four percent, and, and that's great because I think that's probably where we would be normally, but we have a winter coming up where we're going to be using, uh, simulators. And have, have we even factored that in yet, or we just are just hopeful? So we should be looking for a real spike from springtime, I'm guessing? Yes, awesome.
Beth, are we gonna go with the other two or not? The other two, uh, attachments on this? I do have a question on that I should have asked earlier. So on the, um, on the revenues, it shows that property tax is down a hundred and one thousand. I can't grasp why that would be.
Be because we shifted, um, some of our property taxes into TIP this year.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. All right. Anything else to add on the financials, Beth?
Good job, everyone.
Okay, can I just have a motion to accept those, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments? All in favor?
Hi.
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 All right, well, the next item is ordinance five of twenty-twenty-three, an ordinance amending chapter fifteen point zero-four mayor compensation, the Code of Ordinance, City of Asbury. Um, if you're going to raise yourself or my salaries has to be done in election year, so we did a little research and just made a recommendation that's out there for your review, modification, and/or approval.
Make, I got a couple of comments. Just the, the first one that I have, based on, um, the salaries for similar-sized cities, uh, if I'm looking at that correctly, it looks like, um, both the mayor and the council members, um, are above the average currently. So, uh, and then the second question or concern that I would raise is that normally when we do like salary increases, um, they're the same, but this is showing the mayor's going up thirty-three percent, but council people are only going up twenty percent. No, I was just, I just was curious. I was just curious, just.
I looked at the mayor in Dyersville. That's where I we come up with the eight thousand. They're smaller than us. And it hasn't been raised in eight years. If you don't do it, then it'll be twelve years between raises. I just want to say, I don't care. If you want me to leave the room, I will. Not going to change my perspective, the way I approach the job if I'm re-elected. It's just it had been eight years and I thought it was least relevant to have a discussion, and you can do it while with the council. You know, that's, that's entirely up to you.
Uh, yeah, I don't have any issues with that. Uh, uh, I make a motion to accept ordinance five of twenty-twenty-three, an ordinance amending chapter fifteen point four for mayor compensation of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Asbury.
Second.
Motion is second, second by Council Rice. Discussion. All roll, please.
Reich.
Hi.
Joe Meyer.
Nay.
Keesling.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Link Hammer.
Nay.
And a motion carries three-two. Is there a motion to waive the statutory reading?
So moved. Second.
Motion made in a second, with statutory reading.
We have a discussion before we move to...
Sure.
Um, I'd like to have it brought back because two people voted no, and at least then if citizens want to weigh in on it, they can, I mean, at least one more time.
Okay, motion is second, another discussion. All roll.
Reich.
Hi.
Joe Meyer.
Nay.
Keesling.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Link Hammer.
Nay.
That passed, three-two, is there a motion to put ordinance seventeen of, I'm sorry, ordinance six of twenty-twenty-three in this final passage in acceptance?
So moved, second.
And discussion. All roll.
Reich.
Hi.
Joe Meyer.
Hey.
Keesling.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Link Hammer.
Nay.
It is approved. I did say seven amend, or six, five of twenty-twenty-three. Next is ordinance six of twenty-twenty-three, an ordinance amending chapter seventeen point zero-six council compensation of the Code of Ordinances, City of Asbury. Again, I just raised the fifteen dollars. I didn't do the math and the percentage, so if you feel obligated to raise it, it's entirely up to you.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number six of twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
A motion is second, discussion. All roll.
Reich.
Hi.
Joe Meyer.
Nay.
Keesling.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Link Hammer.
Nay.
That's approved, three-two, is there a motion to waive the statutory rule, requiring said ordinance be considered and voted on, passed age, at three council meetings prior to the meeting in which it is to be finally passed?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. The discussion. All roll.
Reich.
Hi.
Joe Meyer.
Nay.
Keesling.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Link Hammer.
Nay.
That's approved. There's a motion to finally pass and adopt ordinance six of twenty-twenty-three.
Again, so moved. Second.
Motion made in a second, call roll.
Reich.
Hi.
Joe Meyer.
Nay.
Keesling.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Can, Link Hammer.
Nay.
That's approved. Next, we'll have a five-year capital improvement plan review. Um, staff has been working on this for a couple of months now. Uh, a lot of meetings in the mornings after staff and during staff, so, um, this is for your first look at it. Certainly not final. You have the last say on that, but this is what, based on the infrastructure and the projects and best review, and I believe you met with Tim at least once in terms of our financial status with bonding, correct? I believe you met with Tim Elise once in terms of our financial status with bonding. Correct, Beth?
Yes, I have met with Tim, and it'll still probably go back to Tim for another review. I mean, really, the goal for tonight is for city council to review the projects, to look at where we've got them, you know, scheduled in, to look to see if there's any deletions, additions, or reprioritization of any of the projects. We'll start with the street projects, starting with Autumn Drive, which, you know, coming up here, you know, in not-too-near future, that'll be, you know, done. The next one, of course, on the list and is imminent, is the Autumn Drive project, which we'll be getting bids for, and right now that's an estimated cost of three million ninety-five thousand dollars. But with us getting bids by the next council meeting, I will be updating that estimated cost to more of an actual, based on what we get for bids. The roundabout at Asbury Road and Hales Mill Road, a three-legged roundabout, is slated then to come in in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. I don't know if we want to pause here and have more discussion about that. One of the things we have added with that project, and that's why it's highlighted, is doing the overlay on Asbury Road, east of Radford, to the east city limits. It was last overlaid in two thousand and nine with our water looping project. And we feel that when we do the Hales Mill Road roundabout, that it would be a good time to also, you know, put on a, you know, another lift or an overlay on the Asbury Road east city limits.
I don't see the cost estimates, comparison between the two, between the three-legged and the... Well, as we discussed in previous meeting about Luther Manor's direction, changing them not objecting to a four-legged roundabout. Our takeaway was to get the cost estimates between the two, and I don't see that in the packet. So I don't know if we can have any meaningful discussion on the option.
Yeah, I agree with that. I saw the two pictures. I think we just need to know what the costs.
Yeah, we probably should. We'll get that on the next meeting. So right now, it's, we're going with, as council approved the dual roundabout solution, and the two million dollars is there, but the vast majority of that will be funded through...
Just a curious, just a question on the, the...
Table of all this, so let me open this again.
Both options had the acquisition costs for property in them?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I've been just trying to find the cost of the dual roundabout on this.
I'm sorry, Beth, what was the, the double roundabout cost?
It's slightly less at three million five hundred thousand dollars.
If you're comfortable with those numbers, then we, you know, we want to discuss it now, we certainly can. We didn't adjust for inflation. We figured both would go up the same amount, so we just, just kind of left those numbers in place.
To your point, Jim, though, if we go, if we, what's the word I want to use? If we approve this, where it has just a three-legged option, does that lock us in? Or can we move over to that four-legged option if we decide to go that way?
No, you certainly can. The construction of the three-legged roundabout can and will be, would be modified to a four-legged with...
Yeah, basically, the first phase that's going to happen is it's going to be installed and operate as a three-leg roundabout, but it will have the ability to expand to a four-leg option. So that you wouldn't, with this first phase that's on the CIP for twenty-five, twenty-six, you could still have the option either add a second roundabout or realign Radford Road.
At this point in time, I, you know, I'm concurring with Nate, is for twenty-five, twenty-six, we're really just doing a, you know, the three-legged roundabout to extend it, to go to Radford or to do this, you know, second roundabout option is still a future project. It's not something that we would do at the time we do the three-legged roundabout. But we have the, big change has been the ownership and the position of Luther Manor. Where, when we had this discussion of the connection to Radford, Luther Manor was in here saying, no, you'll, you know, crush our expansion plans. And now that most of this property, a lot of this property is going to come up for sale, you know, and it's under one person's ownership, is this something, you know, in a long-term plan, you know, city council would want to consider purchasing it sooner, you know, rather than later?
And even though it's, the four-legged is a long ways off, we do need, like Beth alluded to, we, if your desire is to change direction back to the original plan, the sooner we know that, the sooner we can be standing in line for these acquisitions. There have been market analysis requested on these properties. I've made aware of that, so the time is kind of imminent. We don't have to buy them. We could let them go on the market and be purchased by a third party and then negotiate with them later. I'm fine with that. It's just, you know, we'll pay more later. The thing is, you know, if we're going to change this around, we got to go back and break the news to some people on the south side of Radford Road or south side of Asbury, who were in the crosshairs and we took them out. And, you know, they're like, oh, you're not going to put a roundabout through my backyard, and now you actually could, right? If we weren't taking any property really to speak of other than, well, hello. With the three-legged, two, three, two, three-legged options, yeah, I'm sorry.
The only thing that I'm missing that, that from a financial perspective I need to see is, this is acquisition cost, but what I need to know is lost revenue. I know, I want to know what property taxes that we get on the seven houses or eight houses that we take out versus the daycare center. I mean, there's, you know, what, what the balance is on those, because it's lost revenue.
It is, and we're not, the initial plan is only take a couple of houses. We're trying to refine that south, southern connection to Radford. Nate was looking at that. And what we're struggling is, it's a good point, but then you're also going to take that land and be able to redevelop this commercial property. If you, if you did buy those houses that are in yellow, we don't have to. The one's a little close, but if we did, I would envision they would not go back presidential. Why would you want to build a house in front of a roundabout? So I can't put a number on that. You guys will probably have to, you know, your best judgment, but yes, we're going to buy a house. We're going to demolish it, and then that revenue is gone, but at some point, that land would be worth more for commercial development. Commercial property raises higher square footage, so hopefully it's a wash, but I don't know if I'm going to be able to give you that number.
Well, but you can give me the number, what property taxes are on the yellow property versus, and versus the three-legged and versus the...
Right. And at this point, we're only talking a couple, maybe three, so it's minimal, but yes. Yes, because we don't have to, Beth, we don't have to...
This one, on the southeast corner, it gets really close and votes it on the house. This one probably doesn't have to be required. This one will. And we're trying to find a way that we don't have to put it down. So it's extended to the flooring, so you're probably... And then I'm assuming there would be some serious litigation on the daycare center?
Yes, and, and we're kind of struggling. If you looked at the appraise, assess value on that, and what she's going to want are probably considerably far apart. So anyhow, at some point, we, we've got to make a decision if we're going to go back. You're going to have the discussion. We need to bring in the property owners and, you know, break the news with them, but it, you know, we don't have to buy the property now. It'd be nice to know where you're going sooner than later if you're not going to acquire.
To Russ's point, he's got a, a good point, too. I fully expected that at some point in time, at least a portion of that property would come back on the tax rolls. Are you saying that you would be held up because you don't, don't know that estimate?
No, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm held, but I just want to know the number. That's, finance guys like to see the numbers.
Totally get it, totally get it.
Jim, if you're going the four lane, how many access points are you thinking about having that road have with potential property? I mean, the whole idea is to speed traffic up. I don't know if I want to clog it up with putting three or four access on that road.
Well, you're going to have to have one for each one anyhow. I mean, you can't, you can't not let them access their property. Then with it set empty, you're right. So you'd have to weigh whether you want to develop that and sell it and get tax revenue back on, on the rolls, or you want to leave it set empty to not have a driveway. I mean, look at how close the driveways are up to Grand View and University. Hardick is right there. I mean, discussions we've had with Ben, it's, it's not a concern, but we can go back and ask that again. But even, even so, I mean, to Russ's point, we've, we've got to acquire the properties.
I think if, if we can get them both, if, if we can get them both connected with the four-legged roundabout, to me, that would be the best way to do it, but I just want to see the numbers before I can say that that makes sense.
Okay, let us do some more work on that then.
This discussion's...
One other question then, on the, on the mill and overlay that you have. If we stuck with the two, the two roundabouts like that, we would, would, would we do the mill and overlay then? And only after, did we put the second one in, or would we do it right away after the first one?
Needs to be done.
We're, we're concrete to Radford anyhow. Frank, you had a comment, I'm sorry.
Facility that is exempt, that we are still receiving property tax dollars, like the duplexes or this, you know, side-by-sides and the other properties.
We'll, we'll bring it back and then I think kind of, you know, need to know if you want to go that direction so we can bring the neighbors in and break it to them.
The other thing we can do, like Mar-a-Lago, and when the, when the, when the daycare center says that it's worth two million dollars, then the assessment should go up.
Good point. So any other, anything on the roundabout other than the fact you won those numbers? Okay, proceed, Beth.
These projects, then we go into, after Autumn Drive is completed, the scenario becomes a series of overlay projects in various neighborhoods at various different costs. Probably to take note, one of the bigger projects will be in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, when an overlay is done in the Wedgewood subdivision. And then where it's blued out, probably somewhat specifically, it's one million eight hundred thousand dollars, but for Eastview, Sprucewood, and Briarwood South, but note that estimated about one point three million of that is going to be water main replacement in those neighborhoods.
When we do Wedgewood, will there be any change in those streets? Will there be curbs, or will there be any sewer work? I know it's an overlay, so we usually don't, but...
Their sewer is fairly new, so there shouldn't be, and all the sewer in that, that neighborhood, best of my knowledge, is in the backyards. But I don't perceive that to be any more than an overlay. You didn't do it any more than an overlay, Nate, did you?
No, my calculation for that was just overlaying what's there, no curb work.
So are we going to have big mains in all of the streets and when we do these overlays? Or are they still all four-inch lines in Maple Hill?
Well, so like Maple Hills, we're upgrading water main to eight inch, because there is some undersized out there that needs to be upgraded. But like Wedgewood, for example, I believe they are already eight inch, and that main, I believe, is actually not even under roadway either. But I'm not a hundred percent sure.
So, so the one point eight is all of Maple Hill? That's, is that what that is?
For a number of overlays, and then also for the upgraded water main work, yeah.
I think there's some significant curb and gutter work in there somewhere, too.
Yeah, for Maple Hills, I did price in some curb and gutter as well.
Then the two roundout, so to speak, the roundabout, not sure whether which, which one will come first. You know, Asbury Road, Cybeau Road, or taking Asbury Road and, and making it a, you know, complete roundabout and connecting it to Radford Road or double roundabout. So we've just put a placeholder in there, in there for approximately three million dollars for a roundabout. That's probably going to go into the community at a later date.
Beth, just one other question. Is there any time constraints on that one point five million dollar grant that we're getting for the roundabout?
That's why it's in the twenty-five fiscal year, because that's when that money is available. Questions on any of the street projects we've named? Water projects, just a couple of small ones, Parkside Water Main upgrade up here. Parkside Water Main upgrade, Water Main Replaced Project, and continue with hydrant repairs.
Just a quick question on the water meters for Blaine. We, we provide the water to Woodmore. Are they on a flat fee or are they metered as well? They're not in our, they are metered, but they are metered, right? Okay.
Origin and outside the city rate in Woodmore.
How many more meters have we got to go yet?
This will be an ongoing project.
Mm-hmm.
Probably as we get to the end of one, it'll start replacing the ones we started at the beginning.
Okay, thank you.
The ones we're replacing are more of a twenty-year life cycle, so...
One of the questions that, that I would ask on that, when they put ours in, they said that the batteries would last about ten years. So is, will the batteries last twenty years on the new ones?
The warranty on the batteries on the new ones is ten, I believe. So in theory, between ten and twenty.
Then we have the sanitary sewer projects, a couple of sludge removal projects approximately every four years. And at some point, if we ever, you know, move towards doing the last sanitary sewer extension in Hidden Meadows. For stormwater projects, our next big project will be that Forest Hills project that's in the current year budget. our next big project will be that Forest Hills project that's in this current year budget. In '28, '29, we're looking at doing a smaller Radford Road stream bank project at $40,000. And we're looking at potentially in '29, '30, to do a stream bank stabilization from the Hales Mills lift station to the Leadham Farm and possible shared use trail. And that's really just down the hill from McCoy Creek Park. Going on into golf course projects. Biggest project there is we've just completed the clubhouse renovation. Still looking for irrigation updates, creek and pond repairs, and a carp path replacement. Potentially, we're working on moving the carp path replacement project up from '28, '29 to a future year. But it's going to really be dependent on what TIF funds we do come available to do that project. And then as far as park projects, overlay the Alt House Trail around the pond is potentially $53,000. Forest Hills Trails in the, on the north side of Forest Hills, the trail, there's some stream bank stabilization that needs to be done back there. So looking at potentially the year '25, '26. There's a park board priority project is to pave a 10-foot trail from Arrowhead to Wedgewood. And then what we also envisioned as part of our discussions is then to, once that trail comes from Arrowhead to Wedgewood, it's got to go somewhere. And then to continue the trail along Cyple Road up to Asbury Road, where it would connect then, cross the road into, on Cyple Road into Forest Hills. So then people would have to, you know, cross that intersection, but they would have a pathway from then Wedgewood to go into Forest Hills, therefore connecting both sides of the city with trail.
I have a question on Cyple Road combined with Wedgewood Trail. Would you put sidewalks in at that time to take it all the way down to the, what subdivision is that? I can't think of it.
Arrow?
So that that would go all the way down and go over?
Point. Well, Wedgewood well is, then probably bring it across the back end of Jan Lex's property where we have an easement, then connect it into Arrowhead subdivision on there. Just do a, they'd be on the street at that point. Then take, then go down to, take it down then to the corner of, Osage and Cyple Road. And then turn the trail and bring it on the west side of Cyple Road up north to Asbury Road. When it came, comes to probably Centura Court, we did have discussions, Nate, does this include? If we went south from Osage, then we talked about taking the trail down along where the city property is to that next Arrowhead Street? Or is this just taking it north?
So what was factored in, I guess, in the estimate was to run basically from the Arrowhead subdivision to Asbury Road with sidewalk on just the west side of Cyple. Now, I think Centura Court is the one that is between Arrowhead and Cyple, right? But it's on the east side, Cyple. If we wanted to look into just putting like crosswalk in there or something, that, I mean, potentially would disconnect it to the...
And we could also look into, you know, taking that sidewalk and go south, you know, where it's, would butt up to the detention pond and...
And would we put sidewalk in on the farmland there on the west side?
It would be along that farmland. It's already graded out for sidewalks.
I thought it was, yeah, okay. Thank you.
I just have one comment on the park projects. And just to relay on is the pickleball courts get a lot of use and I really think we could use two to four more pickleball courts.
Really rounds out our projects for right now.
Okay, any other comments? Not, Beth, what's the next step for you and Beth?
There's no other update estimates. I can, we can look at updating, see what, you know, if council wants to entertain. I guess my question would be, does council want to add pickleball courts into the park plan for right now?
I think we need to study where we'd put them, what land's available. Do we have earmarked anything else for that, where we go? I think there needs to be a little research done.
And I guess, I mean, I see, I see they do get used on certain times, but it's only three months of the year and mostly, I guess, at a certain times. Other times in the day, they're completely empty, so...
Yeah, to that point, I would add that, I'm not saying that we shouldn't add maybe some more, but I don't know that I would go. What did you say, Russ, three or four? I don't know if I'd go three or four, but...
Well...
If I misunderstood, but, yeah, let's look at it.
So you're hearing people say need more. Has anybody else heard anything? Has Park Board been approached to ask for more? I'm just trying to understand where...
Karen, you're on Park Board. And would have they said anything about more pickleball courts?
We touched on the subject but never expanded on it. So no.
Well, we'll look at some options. I think really McCoy Creek is probably your only one.
Well, the other?
Put them, you got that parking, right?
Actually, actually, the place that might hold two of them would be up at Arrowhead, up there where that mammoth thing is. There's space up there for, we were talking about a volleyball court, but pickleball courts might work just as well.
We'll look at some options and if... Yeah, but, yeah, they're not, that's a good point, okay. So Beth, we'll go back and work, rework this and put a bow on it here soon?
Yeah, probably could be as soon as next meeting done.
Okay. I do want to, you know, get this roundabout thing. We got to keep moving on that. All right, that was the last agenda item. So now we have police report, GM report, motion to accept or comments.
Just no, no motion on this. It was just discussion tonight, Bob, thank you, though.
Appreciate your enthusiasm. So anyhow...
I'll make a motion to accept the reports.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Karen, would you start roundtable?
I just want to remind everybody about the Halloween parade on October 20th. Be there, it's a great time. Thank you.
Obviously, it's getting darker sooner, so be careful when we're driving. Look out that there's still children out because it's still pretty nice weather. And there's streets without sidewalks that they could be playing in.
The only thing that I would have to say is since we had a citizen approach us about the ATV, UTV thing, then it's something we need to bring back up in discussion. If the council does the will of the people, then we should be listening to what the people want.
Okay. You know, the walk-through tonight went well. I can't, tired of having these conversations. I'm sure all of you are, so I look forward to the day we don't have to do this any longer. And that day is very, very soon. That'll be a good thing. It is difficult, and we hit a lot of corner lots on this one. It's probably the toughest one we've had, we had to do in terms of assessments. It's going to be a challenge, but, you know, the residents did, for the most part, understand why it's there and why it needs to be done. But I hate having that conversation. Go over it, but I have anything else, Beth? Do you have anything?
Trick or treat is October 31st from 5:30 to 7:00. That seems to be the question of the day.
Good to know. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.